Mr. Mayor.
Oh, not me.
Tick tock.
Mister.
Tick tock. Hi, welcome back.
Oh, thanks.
It's six o'clock.
My computer decided I wanted to update and restart, so.
Oh, no.
Yes, might we get started?
I'm gonna do it. Thank you.
Short timer's holding us up.
Short timer.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our September seventh council meeting. Would you please stand, join us in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the love of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Wilson?
Let's bow for prayer, please. Holy Father, we ask your blessings on the people gathered here tonight called to lead Canton, Georgia. Help us as leaders not to ask first, how do we fix this, but what do we need to learn? What might we change for the better? And whom do we listen? Remind us, because we forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political debate today, that we're not leaders, but servants, and that it is our responsibility to serve the common good of all. Grant us wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May we speak out when it's time to speak out and listen when it's time to listen. And may we always be guided by the spirit of community, of justice, and of love. We pray in the name of all that is holy, your name. Amen.
Amen.
I'd like to call our September seventh, two thousand and twenty-three council meeting to order. Begin with consideration to approve tonight's agenda. Are there any changes or revisions?
Mr. Mayor, I need to request that we add a settlement agreement to item eleven F as part of that discussion on that intergovernmental agreement with the Downtown Development Authority, and also that we add an executive session for real estate litigation and personnel.
Okay. So the executive session was for?
Real estate litigation and personnel.
Okay. Okay, any other revisions or changes? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. You have in your packet our draft minutes from our August seventeenth meeting. Are there any revisions, changes, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Well, the motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Have a couple of informational items this evening, beginning with the review of July financials. Ms. Forrester?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
So normally I take this time to review the previous month's financial statements. I'm going to review those in the later item when we talk about budget amendments. So right now I just wanted to cover some general items, and I'm gonna talk about the bond rating, the budget, the audit, and the digest. So one of the things that we rarely talk about is the bond rating, but it's very important because we borrowed over sixty-two million dollars to finance the wastewater treatment plant. And it makes me think back to when I first started with the city of Canton. And in the month of September, in the first few years that I worked here, the city was borrowing money just to make payroll until November and December, when the real estate and personal property taxes came in. I'm glad to report that we're in a much better position today as evidenced by our prime investment-grade credit rating with S and P Global and Moody's Investor Services. And those are primarily a result of our fund balance accounts, which some people also call our reserves, and our cash balances. And I just want to read a statement from the Moody's Investor Report as to why we had a issuer rating of double A two. And for the city of Canton, some of our credit strengths were that we are a large growing tax base in the Atlanta metropolitan area. We have healthy financial positions following several years of surpluses, and we have low fixed cost. Some factors that could lead to an upgrade are continued tax base expansion, strengthened socio-economic indicators, and growth in financial reserves and liquidity. In regards to the budget and the five-point-four millage rate that was just passed in July, I wanted to mention that next year's budget increase for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four was a total budget increase of two-point-nine-seven percent. This falls in line with reports that have come out in the last month from the Senior Citizen League that estimates that the Social Security cost of leman adjustment for two thousand and twenty-four will be around three percent. We should be proud of that number. We should also be proud that the current year's budget, two thousand and twenty-three, when we amended, prepared it in two thousand and twenty-two, at that time, we had a eight percent increase to the general fund for the current year over previous year. And it turns out that the Social Security Administration's COLA for two thousand and twenty-three calendar year was eight-point-seven percent. So we've been in line for the last few years regarding our budget. As it is September, this is the last month of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, so we're preparing for our year-end financials, and we're getting ready for the audit. So I wanted to bring one issue to your attention concerning our auditors. Our contract for the last three years expired with the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two audit. So in a normal course of action, we would put out an RFP, and most bids would come back with three-year contracts. But we're in the position of thinking it might be best to do a one-year extension with our current auditors and let the new council that will be coming in on January first be the audit committee that determines who the new auditors will be for the next three years. Now, if that's something you weren't comfortable with, we can go ahead and do an RFP now. That would pretty much commit us for three years moving forward. But like I said, Finance Department is recommending we just do a one-year extension with the current auditors, and then next year we do the RFP for three years moving forward. And the City Manager, I would be glad to answer any questions in that regard. And lastly, I wanted to talk about the digest. If you haven't noticed, the tax statements from Cherokee County went live today. That means statements are going in the mail for taxes that are gonna be due in November. And there were some interesting figures that dropped now that we have the parcel information for the city of Canton. Some things that I found interesting were that we have ten thousand, six hundred residential parcels in the city of Canton. Of those, just five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven are eligible to receive the homeowner's tax relief grant. That means that fifty-five percent of the property, residential properties in the city of Canton are owner-occupied. Of those that are owner-occupied, seniors represent fifty-four percent of the owner-occupied properties. If you're looking at all residential property as a whole, seniors represent just thirty percent of the residential properties. Thought that was important to know because that issue comes up a lot in discussions. And another issue that comes up in discussions too, sometimes with commercial properties, is confusion sometimes in the, by the public on whether apartment complexes pay city of Canton property tax and school tax. And I just wanted to let you know I reviewed the two thousand and twenty-three statement for one of our top ten taxpayers in the city of Canton. This is a relatively new apartment complex. The market value is over seventy million dollars. And the taxes that will come into the city of Canton will be over a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. The school board will receive over five hundred thousand dollars from this apartment complex. So I just wanted to point that out. And that concludes my highlights of the financials at this time. I'm glad to answer any questions, or I'll speak to you again later on with the budget amendments.
Thank you, Ms. Forrester. Appreciate that information, especially the high-level information. Share your enthusiasm on the bond rating and the budgets and the digest information. Certainly very interesting, but certainly proud of the work that our finance team and the council has done and previous council and mayor's done in reducing our debt. Proud of the work we've done and our fiscal management of our citizens' finances, so. Any questions for Ms. Forrester? I know she'll be up again later this evening, so you'll have another opportunity, so. Thank you. Next, water treatment plant update. Ms. Rotabian?
Thank you. Over the last several years, we've spent a lot of money in upgrading our infrastructure, and we've got one more to deal with, which is a new water plant. Just a little history. This is a picture of our, of our existing plant. Another shot of it in the background. You'll see those, see them closely, those three walkways. Those are our new flocculators, just to point that out. But a little history, portions of this plant were constructed in the twenties. Majority of it was in nineteen fifty-four. And we had a minor upgrade in the ninety-six, and it's pretty much been that way since then. And it's, it's rocking along and, and putting out great water. We've got a permit capacity to put out into our system of five-and-a-half million gallons a day. And we're, you know, almost a little over half, half of that capacity now with the max, you know, a little over four. And then looking back at the, the master plan projections that were done in two thousand and eighteen, we should be, you know, average day around in two thousand and forty about five-point-six million gallons a day. So we don't want to be in the situation we were with the wastewater plant where we're scrambling to get capacity at the last minute. So we're, we're looking to do a new, a new water plant in the eight-to-ten million gallon per day capacity with ability to expand in the future. We will also add space for an additional process, both physical space as well as hydraulic space to handle PFAS, should that come into play in the future. We're still looking at a conventional plant, which is the process that we have now. Thought process being we would put it on the currently-owned property by the city up near the reservoir. We would use the reservoir as our service water, as our water source. And ultimately, what we would do, I guess those, the blue lines don't show it that well, but we would tap that red line on the east side of Bluff Parkway and run it north to the new site for, to feed the plant. We have had discussions with Carr Marietta about this. I think for the most part they're, they're okay with this process. We've got some details to work out with them. And this is kind of a timeline for moving forward. Issuing RFP the end of this year or earlier, if need be. But basically get everything, you know, by the time everything is done, we'd have it in line or online, you know, twenty-twenty-nine. And so this is just kind of a informational update of where we're headed. And if you've got any questions, thoughts, or whatever, here for you.
Thanks for the overview. I know it's something we've been discussing, something's been discussed for, for years. And I know it can be a big, big topic on our fall retreat.
Yes.
Any immediate questions for Mr. Rotabian? I know we'll have plenty going forward, so.
Okay.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Any announcements this evening? Ten-minute public input. We have a ten-minute total for a public input tonight. We have three residents signed up for that ten minutes, beginning with Mr. Jim Lindemeyer. If you please come forward, state your name and address, and speak clearly into the microphone, please. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Jim Lindemeyer, I'm a West Point Army graduate, nineteen eighty, and I represent one of the fifteen to seventeen thousand veterans in the Cherokee County, which is the sixth-largest veteran county in the state. Georgia is the third-largest veteran community in the state, number one for female veterans. Today, we're faced with the biggest problem we have, and that's suicide. Last Friday kicked off Veterans Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month. And the state with Governor Kemp has put out a program that is in support of the National SAMSA Program that's for the Governor and Mayor's Challenge to support and back the veterans of the state in mental health. We're not asking for money. What we're asking for is you guys to join that, be one of the first onboard with that program. I've created a briefing document for you that you can read. But we have, we got a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant from VA. We're the only county in the state of Georgia to get that such grant, covering Cherokee and Pickens. And yesterday we were notified, we got a one-point-two-million-dollar grant from SAMSA that's gonna expand our capability. We went live with cards that are putting on a community that will direct veterans who are in crisis to go ahead and reach out. We're also working with the Sheriff's Department Co-Response Team on educating them on how to handle veteran suicide. And the whole goal here is to get therapist, therapy capability here in the county that it doesn't exist because civilian therapists don't really know how to handle veteran issues when it comes to PTSD and combat trauma. So what we're, we have a tagline that we've also got out here. It's, it's basically here is, you know, don't struggle alone. One of the biggest problems is veterans, they, they think they can do it on their own, and they can't. I was combat arms, I can tell you, I was on the East German border when there was one, and we saw things we didn't want to see, and a lot of the guys who've come out in Iraq and Afghanistan still have that problem going forward. So what we've got is posters and things that we're paying for in our pocket that we want to get out there, working with guys with you, creating a steering committee that we're already in support of. We've been up and running for, since February of this year to go ahead and create a, a focus around Canton and the vets here. You've got Stouts, you've got Ten-Ten Contract, and you've got Taylor Construction. All those are veteran-owned businesses, along with Vietnam Veterans, things like American Crane. So we're in here, we live amongst you, just that we have to be treated, we need to help ourselves a little differently than, than what you're used to doing. So we hope that you'll reach out to Commissioner Tricia Ross, who's head of the George Department of Veteran Services, and sign up as one of the first cities on the Mayor's Challenge, which is a nationwide program. So I'm gonna leave this to you. We're more than happy to follow back up with you. And again, what we're looking for right now is this. We've got the red, white, and blue barbecue coming up the end of October, where we're bringing, we've been in contact, we're bringing a Food Network chef coming in. We've got a world champion coming in. We've got state runner-up, we've got the Kingsford runner-up coming into the program. And this is gonna focus around veteran-owned businesses and veterans in the community as well as things that we can do to help veterans overcome mental health, which today isn't twenty-two a day, it's two to four times that number according to other studies we see. So with that, I'm going to leave this information with you and hope that we can start a dialogue to come back and work with you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Lindemeyer. If you want to leave it with our Assistant City Manager, we will review that and appreciate your work. Thank you. Mr. Thomas Weaver?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Thomas Weaver, and I reside at one thirty-one Old Mary Road. Item that I wanted to address tonight was item eleven E of the City Council's business. I know that the city's administration is geared up to propose to council to approve of the deed, abeyance restriction removal for the county and to cause the county to, or excuse me, the city to acquire the Tippins parcel in exchange for the removal of the deed restriction for the fire station that a former council insisted on. I'm not gonna get into the politics of the fire station issue. Instead, I'm going to speak to what I spoke to before back in April. I do recall when I asked council to please consider if the city should acquire the Tippins property, that council consider if it would be possible to save the Tippins Gymnasium. I know that back in February, during the late winter, the county Board of Commissioners approved almost a million dollars, perhaps just a little bit more, from ARPA grant fund proposals with different nonprofits. And I know that among those was the Canton Housing Authority and most ministries to redevelop the Tippins property, if I do recall correctly. So I know that if this deed proposal and, and title, I guess you could say swap, is approved by council, because I was in attendance this past Tuesday when the county Board of Commissioners approved it. I know that the city will acquire the property. I don't know to the extent of how those nonprofits have, I don't know what their architectural plans are for renovating the property based on the ARPA grants that they've received from the county. But if the city becomes the owner of the parcel, it'd be my ask of the city, by and through council and the city's administration, to see whether or not the city could work with those nonprofits to save perhaps the gymnasium because of the history and the culture there, even though the Tippins School is scheduled to be demolished. I know that to be true. It would be just a gem and a treasure, I think, if the city could, could somehow save that property. Maybe, maybe not. I don't know what the architectural plans are for the nonprofits again, but it's just an ask if that should be the will of council and how council chooses to vote later this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Appreciate it. Ms. Erin, Erin Treenbath? Good evening.
Hi, good evening. I'm a homeowner here in Canton, and my family and I rely on very modest rental income from our home to meet the needs of our family. So in reference to the new business ordinance, eleven C, that you'll be talking about later this afternoon, that's in regard to short-term rentals, really wanted to thank the committee. Thank you, Mr. Grant, for initiating the committee to explore this issue. Special, wanna offer sincere thanks to the committee members who drafted this. Of course, Mr. Dyer as well for, for working on it. I've shared a few specific points of feedback to members of the committee by email. Thank you for considering that. My wife and I wanted to support this effort, and we understand the hard work that you do on behalf of our community. We really wanna partner with you, if possible, to, to support this initiative in the future. So once again, wanted to thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. We'll move into old business and item A, discussion of revised growth boundary agreement and memorandum of understanding. Mr. Green?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you recall, in the very recent past, this body approved the growth boundary agreement map and memorandum of understanding. It was our impression from the county that the documents that they provided us was the, the final document. Once it was signed and approved and we forwarded it to the county, they seemed to be taken aback a little bit, like, wait a minute, we wanted some additional discussion. So they contacted us, and recently Mayor Grant, Mr. Peppers, Mr. Ingram, and myself met with the county officials, which included Brantley Day, Commissioner Johnston, and discussed numerous aspects of the growth boundary agreement. And it kind of boiled down to that they were in agreement to add the property on the south side of Highway Five. Let us retain the portion that they wanted removed adjacent to the airport. There was discussion on Canton West. They, I won't say were insistent, but would have liked for the city to have relinquished that portion out of the growth boundary. Both Mayor Grant and Mr. Peppers were pretty insistent that that area stay within the agreement. We did reach a compromise in that if that ever becomes developed, that the density out there would be one or less housing units per acre. That was something that was very dear to Mr. Johnston's heart. Also during that meeting, there was discussion on unincorporated islands that are here within the city. The county stated that they probably would not object to any of those that are interior. There were some changes that was made to the growth boundary agreement in that we are going to add a email portal so that the city and county officials and staff members can talk directly to one another. And there was also some discussion during that meeting of the property that the county may be purchasing from the Cherokee County Water and Sewer Authority. And if they ever decide to sell that, they were gonna grant the city the right for first refusal. You have a copy of the growth boundary updated agreement, the memorandum of, of understanding, and the map that is Exhibit A that shows what the county, I believe, has agreed to providing us. And if you have any questions about that, certainly I'll be glad to try to answer them. I don't think that there was anything outstandingly different that would be a, a problem between the city and county. Basically, the memorandum of understanding is a pathway for discussion and communication if someone wants to annex property or rezone property within or adjacent to the growth boundary agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Appreciate that update. We did, of course, the council had, had discussed that. We received the documents from the county. We discussed it and voted on that based on the intentions and discussions that were, were sent to us, the documents from the county originally. Of course, as we all know, that the city of Canton, when this process started, was the only city in the county that, that had an existing growth boundary agreement with, with the county. It's in place, and I think through two thousand and fifty. Is that correct?
Twenty fifty-four, I believe.
Two thousand and fifty-four, so. And, go ahead.
Interrupt there. The, the growth boundary agreement that we had with the county did not have a sunset date on it. The one that they are proposing, it will end in two thousand and fifty-four.
Right. So we, we had one that, you know, was, was, I guess, in perpetuity, so. And I think we, we all agreed, and I think when the conversation started, that, that certainly the process and communication could be improved, and certainly we were all in agreement that the process could be better. And that was certainly motivation for the city to, to, to work with, with the county there. And I think we've stated repeatedly to the, to the county that I think the city of Canton, I think, is somewhat different than the other cities, is our goal is not always on growing our footprint rapidly. It's, 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 it's growing the quality of our, our city. And certainly we've expressed, and I've expressed it to Chairman Johnson on many occasions, that, that our interest would probably be on more incorporating the, the unincorporated islands into the city than expanding outside our, our currently growth boundary agreement. And so we're happy to see that they, they are interested in, in working with us on that and had incorporated that into their agreement with, with Woodstock and, and. And I believe, if, correct me, Mr. Peppers, if I'm wrong, that regardless of what we decided on the new growth boundary agreement, whether we proceed with this revised version or keep the one we have, that they want to offer that to us regardless. But I feel on the Canton West issue, you know, the growth boundary agreement is really to kind of just to define our intentions of how we grow and how we annex if projects come in and how that is communicated. And to talk about how a potential project or parcels may develop, you know, hypothetically seems a little bit out of place as part of the growth boundary agreement. And assuming that it might develop as residential. It's not, growth boundary agreements are not intended to discuss zoning or master plans of those nature. So again, I think we, the one we sent was very thoughtful and intentional. It's certainly up to council what we want to, how we want to proceed with this, you know, revised version back from the county. Again, it's not that significantly different. I believe, Mr. Dyer, you can correct me if I'm wrong or not, but some stipulation or condition in there that we would agree in that area to only allow one residential unit per acre, I don't think could be enforced through a growth boundary agreement or not. But it, I don't know, growth boundary agreement and certain, I guess, political conversations seem to be not kind of appropriate in this conversation there. But I think we have the option of discussing if we're okay with that. Mr. Dyer, again, you can weigh in whether that could be enforced or not. I don't know. Again, we're assuming that currently what the county commission wants now and what county commissioners may want five or 10 years from now, you know, is going to be the same also is, I think, you know, being a little presumptuous as well. But I don't know, it just seems a little unproductive at this point, but.
A couple of things I want to mention that I mentioned in the meeting with the county. Some of the commissioners, of course, were not involved with the original growth boundary agreement with the city. And I don't know if they understood why portions of Canton West were included with the city versus not. The lines were drawn based upon our water and sewer service area. The idea is if the city's going to provide water and sewer service, they should have the opportunity to grow to that boundary. And so I made that very clear that, you know, it's not just that we would want to grow out that way. We're charged with providing service out that way. So we should be involved in the discussion of how that development takes place. The county is working with the county water and sewer authority right now on trying to purchase water and sewer authority property that's in that area, that's 640 acres. And part of the reason for that is, is it cuts off some connectivity with Canton West. The problem that I see as your staff is that today's county commission may have no plans on that acreage, but the county commission in years from now could decide that they want it to be built out in a certain way. I tried to remind the commission chairman at that meeting that the two largest developments in Cherokee County, Town Lake and Bridg Mill, were both zoned and built in unincorporated Cherokee County and approved by the commission. They were not approved by cities. And so the idea that we would give up a large tract of land that's in our current growth boundary where we have water and sewer service for the county to make the decisions on what could develop there, knowing that the only places it can access roadway are through the city, is not to the benefit of the city, the citizens, or the neighborhoods that surround that. My suggestion to council would be that, you know, it's difficult for us to say what we would want to hold a development to as it relates to a number of units per acre, when, one, we can't really control what the county wants to do with the property that they're acquiring. I mean, you know, part of the reason why I had pushed the council in considering that area along Old Ball Ground Highway is what the county approved out there was zero lot line residential and it's all rental. It is a very dense neighborhood that they've approved in an unincorporated area. What would stop a future county commission from doing that on that 640 acres or Canton West? We have incorporated islands in the city, south of Butterworth and Univeter, where the county approved townhome development that we probably would not have approved if it had been in the city limits, and it's much denser than one unit per acre, but the county approved that. And so keeping as much of that territory that's adjacent to Laurel Canyon and River Green and Oakdale and North Ottawa in our area, since we're going to be providing water and sewer to it, I think is an important thing for the council. I do like the idea that the county would want to work with us on unincorporated islands. As I said, those two townhome developments that are south of Butterworth and Univeter, they did not work with us on and allowed that to go in, even though they use city roadways, city water, city sewer to that extent. So that's a good provision that's in there. You know, I'm not as concerned about email communication and having one email address to send everything to. I am more concerned about the fact that sometimes we don't hear about the cases that the county has going. I know we send notification. I don't know that we always get notification from them. So if communication's part of it, that's great. The reason why the old agreement lasts as long as it does is because the state of Georgia will allow two governmental bodies to contract for a maximum of 50 years. So without a date in there, 50 years from 2004 is how far it goes out. So, Mr. Dyer, I don't know if you want to comment on the unit per acre, but I certainly would recommend to the council that you not cede over anything with Canton West. One of the things that I mentioned in that meeting is I think that, you know, it's great that the county's intention would be that that area out there grows slowly or doesn't grow at all, specifically the acreage that they're wanting by from the water and sewer authority, but the fact that a future commission could change their mind, at least giving the city the first right of refusal to purchase that property, would protect city, our residents and our neighborhoods from a commission that decides to sell it to the highest offer that might build something that we're not aligned with.
Mr. Dyer?
So generally, an agreement limiting the city council's ability to regulate property in the future would be unenforceable because one council can't bind future councils on that, something that they would otherwise have discretion on. I don't think that an intergovernmental agreement would change that rule. So I don't think it would be enforceable. If we're going to get into land use and we're going to make this actually be productive, which I don't think the county really wants, but what you would do is you would say, if it is less than an acre, one unit per acre, they cannot object. You sort of flip it, which is if we do what you want, that means you're not going to object to our annexation and rezoning. And if we're going to start talking about that, we would want, I think, to talk to them about, well, if you're going to approve these things around us, what are those limitations going to be? And they have not had, expressed much interest in having those discussions, to my knowledge. So I don't, you know, if it's in there, it's probably not enforceable, but why put it in there at all?
Right, right. My thoughts are, is, you know, if we're going to have a growth, new growth boundary agreement, let's have a clean growth boundary agreement, not getting into land use. If you want to have land use conversations, I mean, in my opinion, we have an existing growth boundary agreement, you know, we have time to talk about that and get into those. We have how many more years left on the current one? We can talk about that as long as you want to. But, you know, I don't see, you know, the county trying to bind us with land use stipulations on property in our existing growth boundary is being really acceptable, you know, unless it goes both ways.
Because you can agree on the communication stuff and just do it without a
Exactly.
Without a formal agreement to do it.
So I just don't see it as very productive or, you know, relevant, really. So again, it's up to council. But again, I don't know that there is a real binding timeline for that. We can share this feedback with them and, you know, they can decide. I know they would like to have everyone have new growth boundary agreements, but again, we have one, so.
Or at the very least, you might want to say to the county, it looks like there's some other issues here that we may want to talk through. Would you want to set up a committee to sit down with a committee of the county and have that conversation and bring back some? It's always an odd situation for staff when we get called into a meeting with their staff and a minority of the commission because we don't know if they're speaking for the full commission.
Right, right. No, no.
It's different, it would be different if the commission appointed a group to meet with the council and you appointed a group to meet with them to have that conversation because now you know you're acting on the best interest of the whole group, not just in person or one interpretation.
Right. And I would suggest that we offer that or that they accept the one that we sent them, so.
I liked Mr. Green's description of the growth boundary agreement as a pathway. It's not, it's not a binding agreement. It's something we can look to, to adjust as we go forward. So it's not, since it's not binding, I really think we just look at it as a pathway to how we plan for the future. So I was, do we need to meet again about it or those email addresses and things, can't the staff just handle that? What would, what would a meeting between us and the commissioners?
That's what the government does, Jo Ellen.
What would, what would it, I don't see that it'd be anything that we need to work on. It's non-binding.
The whole discussion about Canton's growth boundary agreement stems from the fact that there were lawsuits with the other cities on their growth and extension. There hasn't been a lawsuit with the city of Canton. And the desire on the staff's side from the county was to have the same agreement for everyone, so it was clear to everyone how they would operate.
Well, I thought it was.
Well, I mean, we
You know, we voted on it. I thought it was agreeable.
They sent it to us and asked us to adopt.
That's what we all thought, Jo.
They sent it to us, asked us to adopt it. We adopted and they said, well, we thought you wanted to talk to us about it first. And I'm like, well, you're calling our staff, asking us when we're going to adopt it. And so we did. If you wanted other things in it, you should propose.
If you're saying, I think what I was saying is that we're happy with the one we sent and if they want to do another one, we'll, we can form committees and talk about it, but we're happy with the one we approved.
And does that, that one, are they still amenable to discussing the unincorporated islands, even if we said that to them? Even if we said we already signed the one you sent us?
That's what we were told in the meeting, that they were.
Okay. Because I think that, as a councilperson who lives in a really large neighborhood near the intersection where they put up all those townhomes that we never would have put up by the Martins at the corner of Univeter and Butterworth, like, that's the kind of thing that confuses people. It's confusing that those, that those two pockets of townhomes are in the county. Like, it doesn't make any sense. It doesn't make any sense, right outside River Green, that the gas station that's going up is the county and the far corner on the left is the county. And so I think that, like, politics aside, and it feels like SDS, post-traumatic stress disorder, this whole conversation, but that is the thing, that's the thing that I would want council and the county to really focus on together. And however many meetings there has to be about that particular item, I think would be fruitful.
Well, the interesting thing about that whole deal of unincorporated islands was it never got brought up by the commission. It was a staff person that said, oh, did we not put that in the agreement? That's in the agreements with the other cities. And it's like, you drafted the agreement to make it like the other cities and then decided not send certain language. You know, one of the things Mr. Dyer and I was just talking about, you could approve what they sent over and just remove the part about the land use from Canton West, about the zoning and all that. That keeps everything the same way it was. It deals with the communication and it also deals with the unincorporated islands, but we're saying we don't agree to restricting future development based off of an arbitrary figure that nobody knows where it came from.
If staff recommends that and is okay with that, I would be okay with that also.
So we'll point out, what the agreement says is the county likely will not object to our annexation. I mean, so it's not, none of it is anything other than words.
Right, right.
Mr. Dyer, I'm assuming when we received it and signed it, it had not already been signed by the county, is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's right.
So they have to execute it on their end? Okay.
They have not approved, apparently they didn't approve it before they sent it to us. We approved it first, which I think is the way they like to operate. So, I mean, one option you would have, if the one acre thing is the only thing that you really have a problem with, you could tonight move to adopt the agreement absent that provision and at least you would be moving it along a little bit.
All right, all right. And we were told in the meeting that they would include the unincorporated islands, that that was their oversight and that would not, they were not going to be using that as a negotiation tool, basically. But I would be, that to me is the most, a more important issue than the land use, but I'm happy to do that unless staff sees another issue with anything else in the revised agreement. So I don't, Mr. Green, according to your memorandum, I don't think you saw anything, or Mr. Peppers, if there's something else that you see. But I just, I just think it muddies that up. It's not the intention of this agreement and.
So what did we just decide?
And you don't have to decide anything.
Don't have to.
If you want, I don't mind to reach out to the county manager tomorrow and say, you know, they like pretty much everything that was added in there. They don't really understand why we would limit to one unit, an acre, on something that there have been no plans turned in on. You know, it just makes no sense.
Right, right. I would do that. It's just, I just think there's no need to act on, again, there's no, there's no critical deadline here, so. Ms. McGree?
Is Canton West in our city limits or is it in the county?
Well, it's in both.
No, all of Canton West is currently unincorporated.
None of it's in the state?
But all of the access to Canton West will eventually touch city streets.
I say this because homes on an acre or more is very appealing to me. We've talked about how we're minus luxury estate homes in our city and that seems like a nice place to do that. Heavily wooded, not disturb much nature, and take a look at that opportunity.
Yeah, I mean, it's not really about the concept or that's a bad concept. It's just, I think the fact that it doesn't really belong in the growth boundary agreement, that's.
You would be ceding your zoning rights to the county?
To the county. But in concept, I mean, you're correct there, so I agree. Okay. I would just follow up with the county manager and let's go from there, but I think, appreciate the feedback from council, so. Thank you, Mr. Green. Item B, discussion of updated zoning categories and other proposed I think, appreciate the feedback from council, so. Thank you, Mr. Green.
Item B, discussion of updated zoning categories and other proposed Unified Development Code amendments.
Uh, this item pertains to the updating of the code of ordinances and elimination of some of the zoning districts. Mr. Tolan had asked for some type of explanation as to what would happen. Hopefully my memo explained how that would take place with elimination of some of the zoning districts and combining others such as, um, getting rid of the neighborhood commercial, which is NC, making those all a general commercial, doing away with all of the R districts except for one, which would allow developers the ability to develop property as a permitted right. If they wanted to do something that differed from the minimum lot size setbacks or what have you, then they could file a master plan that the council would be able to review and say yea or nay, uh, to their proposal. Uh, the RA six zoning district would be combined as RA eight. Elimination of the ORT zoning district and either R ten or O and I will be used on, on those designations. Uh, the PD business office zoning district and the PD traditional neighborhood development district will be eliminated. Currently, there are no properties in the city limits that are zoned with those two categories. If this is approved, there are numerous, numerous areas in the code of ordinances or UDC that would have to be amended as well. The ones that defined the districts as they currently exist would have to be eliminated. Uh, the, a land use table chart would have to be updated to eliminate these zoning districts, designate other ones as either conditional or permitted uses. In addition to that, there are several other code amendments that we are looking at. Uh, one is chapter 105.03 Border Zoning Appeals, and this is simply a housekeeping thing to change all the references to the Border Zoning Appeals and have them just simply, uh, reference the Board of Appeals. Uh, in the CBD District, change townhomes from a permitted use to a conditional use. As townhomes are typically three or more units, which requires a conditional use approval. Uh, in the Cottage Housing District, 104.05, add the Central Business District to a zoning district where this type of development is allowed. Uh, currently for subdivisions, we do not have a parking requirement for amenity areas. Would add that to the Table 103-3 Off-Street Parking Standards and would come up with a maximum and minimum amount of parking spaces allowed there. One of the biggest things that we're currently looking at is being, adjusting our Central Business District to allow breweries and distilleries as a conditional use. Uh, this would require updating Table 102-4, the, uh, land use table. And if there are certain standards that the council would like to see, uh, placed on these type of establishments, that would require amending, um, such after 104, specific use requirements. And just today, another, uh, issue come up about subdividing parcels and having them to have a required 50-foot frontage on a public or private road. This may be discussed a little bit later, but those are some of the things that we're looking at. The Unified Development Code is, as you can imagine, is, is not a static, a document. There's, it's pretty fluid. We see things quite often that need to be added or changed or repaired, for lack of a better word. So that's where we are on those. Hopefully very soon you'll see a ordinance, especially for the breweries and distilleries, being allowed in the CBD District and a light industrial.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Green. I appreciate that information and update. So this is, I know there's a lot to think about here and I know it's a kind of work in progress. So what do you see kind of as the overall timeline for accomplishing this and kind of the next steps? I know you talked about the ordinance for breweries and distilleries, but, uh, what's the process here, timeline, next steps? I mean, how do we proceed here? I mean, this is a lot.
Sure.
Not only for us to think about, staff's done a great job, uh, but then, you know, as we proceed in this process and, you know, communicate it clearly to citizens so they understand that, what we're, we're doing, why we're doing it, uh, I mean, the goal is to simplify. Simplify, simplification is complex at times, so, uh, how we, how we're proceeding here.
On the breweries and distilleries, we have set up a public hearing for September 28th. If that gets approved by this body, then the people that are interested in it will be able to file a conditional use permit. I think it's Monday, October 3rd. That typically is a three-month process and that would come before council, the first Thursday as a public hearing and then the third Thursday in December for possible vote.
What we're trying to do is peel off the pieces that we think we can move the fastest on based on the least amount of work to the code. When we start dealing with rezoning of, of properties or collapsing things, there's a, there's a lot of individual sections of the code that we're having to look through and make sure, okay, if we make a change here, is that show up in the, in the, acted somewhere else in the code? Really and truly what's important for Mr. Green is knowing that, you know, the council as a whole is supportive of looking at collapsing some of those zoning categories so that he can start the work of figuring out what that code amendment's actually going to look like, uh, as an ordinance, so he can bring it back to you and you can have the public hearing and all that associated with it. It's a lot more detailed work than, say, a permitted use or, or, or the change of a, of a permitted use table.
Right, right. Um, I, I guess that's why it's getting, getting to that, that this is gonna take some time and effort and it's gonna be ongoing for a while, uh, and you'll be bringing, bringing it back to us in parts and pieces and, and, and different ordinances that we'll be considering on different uses and as, as they're ready.
Yes, sir.
But I think we have all discussed up to this point that we are in favor of classing the code and simplifying it and I think in the, the basic, uh, direction that we're heading as far as the zoning, uh, and, and clarifying some of those things. So I just wanna make sure you're getting the feedback that you needed. Right, okay.
Well, I guess I do have one comment and not to beat, beat this dead horse too much, but I think for the benefit of the public, once we kind of distill some of this information, it would be very helpful if we could have, um, perhaps Lauren and her team put a graphic together that helps people understand that don't deal with this kind of stuff every day, more of what we're, exactly what we're talking about, what the changes are. Uh, Mr. Green, I wouldn't expect you to do that. That's out of your forte. Um, it's more of a, a creative, you know, graphics kind of thing. So I still, still think that's important.
Yeah.
If we can pull that off.
Yeah. Lauren can do it, right? One, one other question in your memo I wanted to ask Mr. Green. I noticed in that, that in the process, um, there had been some, um, errors noted and, discovered in the, the zoning map, um, and some questions about sort of how, how those are corrected, um, and if it was, we do it at one time or if they were through staff and again, those, we don't go into a lot of detail there, but it's just, um, um, based on past experience and years ago when we had some issues with some, a zoning map area on East Main Street and it caused a, a big controversy and a, and a year-long battle to, to kind of keep that area residential. Uh, I'm, I'm hypersensitive to that, um, and, uh, it's just something that, again, I don't know the nature of it, but my, my concern is that, that, that zoning map errors are corrected sooner rather than later, but, before they cause issues or someone discovers them that, that may want to, to do something with them that we wouldn't want them to do with them, but, but again, I just wanted to kind of question that and ask.
Well, several of their, of the errors, uh, Mr. Patton has found, and I'm assuming it was in his, um, research for parcels to use, uh, for affordable housing, uh, and they're, if they could be considered as Scrivener's errors and could be changed without going through the public hearing, that would be the easiest point. Of course, that's a, that's a question for Mr. Dyer. Uh, we have a development going in off, uh, Bell's Ferry that was the result of the consent order and in reviewing those, uh, plans this afternoon, I discovered that part of the property that was annexed, I believe it was 2005, has never been shown on our zoning map. So that's another one. Several of the errors that occurred when Mr. Patton gave his map to our previous GIS team, they just overlooked or missed zoning categories that he had assigned them. And in reality, and in the beginning, they had been intended to be zoned something else, but the person at that time, uh, I misread his map or I don't wanna say exactly what may have happened, but it was wrong.
Right, okay.
I mean, part of what you have to remember is, you know, 15, 20 years ago, when some of those original digital maps were done, an individual is clicking parcel by parcel to mark what the zoning category is. And when you have 30 zoning categories, there will be some errors that occasionally happen. We have a couple of examples where parcels are zoned multiple things, where there's not a clear line, right? It's one parcel, but it shows as two different zonings, um, partway through the parcel, which doesn't make sense to the, to the public. And back to what Mr. Tolan was, was mentioning, you know, when, when a citizen hears that this is going to be retail, they don't necessarily know the difference between office residential transition, office industrial, general commercial, neighborhood commercial, but if it's zoned commercial, they would know that retail could go there or planned development is just a mixture of uses and we don't need six different categories of planned development. It just means there's a mixture of uses.
Right, right. No, no, I know the, the goal is to simplify and communicate more clearly and, and that's great. And I think just on, on the errors, I understand how they happen and all, I just, just kinda wanna say that the goal is to get them corrected as soon as possible and correctly as possible in the correct, the process.
And I think, as part of this process, you're gonna adopt a new map, so we would fix anything on the map that way. There are, there are some things that I think the idea of administratively just changing the map is there are some that are just so obviously wrong and that's what, we would only be doing those. Otherwise, we'll just wait and do it when we adopt the new map with the changes.
Right, right. And that would be our recommendation, that it's all done at the same time.
And, and it's, we've probably gone too long without, uh, adopting the map again. We need to do it regularly.
Certainly.
Uh, just so you don't end up with these errors out there kind of lingering for a while.
Well, certainly, I mean, I think it's, I mean, we had the same issue with our charter and ordinances and we've gone through that process and we're going through this now, so I appreciate the great work and, and this discovery process and so look forward to getting that correct and updated way it needs to be, so. Thank you.
Item C, discussion of next steps to attracting hotel development in Canton based on Horwath HTL's feasibility studies.
Back in the spring, the city council, um, voted to, um, go under contract with Horwath HTL to do a market analysis for hotel, uh, conference space up at the reservoir on, uh, property that the city owns. Uh, that study was completed and we asked, uh, Horwath to tell us what the next steps would be for that particular site. And so they have provided what's in your agenda packet tonight. Uh, in short, what would, what would occur is the city would basically add on a, a, a task order or a service to Horwath where they would go out and they would market the site and the feasibility information that they have to brands of hotels and let those brands look at that data to determine if it fits their desire for growth within the region, if they're looking at this area for a particular flag of, of, of a product. After they receive that feedback from the brand, then they would put together a proposal process and go out to the development market to secure proposals from developers and then they would bring those back in and rate those proposals based upon, you know, what, what's being proposed, what incentives those proposals might be looking for on the land cost or on, uh, anything from the city. Staff would recommend working with Horwath to let them do that process since that's their, their business model. That's what they operate doing is attracting hotel investment. Um, I bring this to you because we also have a hotel study that was just done on the downtown area by Horwath for the Downtown Development Authority. Um, the reason I bring this to you is the cost of the additional work is between 15 and $20,000. It's all built into our hotel tax, so that's a, that's a reasonable use of that tax because you're building market for promoting tourism conventions and trade shows. Um, the timeline is about 14 weeks. The question back from the consultant is, do you want, do you want one site being handled first? Do you want them done simultaneously? I think when staff was looking at it, you know, the Downtown Development Authority paid for the study downtown, uh, you know, if council wants to move forward with, with the one on the reservoir and also thinks it's a great idea for the one on downtown to work, we can notify the DDA and say, hey, council thinks it, thinks it's a good idea for you to move forward with yours as well. Uh, it didn't seem like from the consultant they had any concerns about having both out there at the same time because they are two distinct sites and the market for that type of lodging is good anyways, but we did wanna ask if that's something that you wanna move forward with so that we could bring back, uh, a, a contract or a task order for you to consider at the, at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Um, I think the, the good news is that the feasibility studies, you know, demonstrated that both, both are very feasible and, and attractive, uh, and, um, my, my personal thoughts on it are that I don't, if we're going to do it, might as well have them look at both at the same time, market both at the same time. And a lot of the hotel brands and flags have the different products, uh, you know, whether it's a resort product on Lake Canton or a downtown boutique hotel property, they have those multiple brands. It may be that one, one hotel brand has products that might be more economically feasible or interesting for them to, to invest in, in both locations, but, um, I'm not sure, I'm sure that they could, you know, look at that for us, but I'm not sure that we were losing anything where you like prioritize one over the other ones, but that's personal opinions. I don't know what council feels, but, uh, I know it's gonna be a long process either way, but, uh, from what I heard from council, everyone's, you know, interested in pursuing both and hearing both, but, um, uh, I don't know why we wouldn't just go ahead and be marketing and looking and checking into both of them at the same, same time.
Ms. Schmidt?
Um, I agree. I think that this council, uh, decided way back in 2020 and 2021 that the direction we wanted to go was tourism and economic development. And I think this is, you know, the best case scenario of what could come from a, um, an effective program like that. And also as, um, the person who sits on the DDA, um, I'm know well what Horwath has brought to the table for the boutique hotel feasibility study and it's really exciting. It's something that's, you know, been a part of our roadmap. It's something that our residents have said they've wanted over and over again. So I would love to see the city move forward with the Lake Canton proposal, um, with Horwath and ask the DDA to move forward with the downtown boutique hotel.
And I, I would just note on the process that, cause I had this question come up, uh, about why they would go to the brands first. Well, part of the reason for that is. about why they would go to the brands first. Well, part of the reason for that is, if we did a traditional proposal process where we asked developers to come to us and tell us what they would build there, they might not build something that a brand would support. And so if the idea is that we need a flag to really support that product over time, we want to know that the flag has an interest in the market first before a developer goes out to start designing a product. So the benefit of their process is getting that brand buy-in first from two, three, four different brands, and then them going out and finding developers who have built that type of product or who had experience in building that type of product to then put pencil to paper and come up with what they think they could do as part of a proposal. And ultimately, you get to decide which of those proposals you would want to move forward with as part of a development agreement.
And I think it's just important to reiterate, you know, we're not the experts. I don't I'm not I've never built a hotel. But we've studied and visited plenty of arts-based and tourism-based cities similar to Canton, like the incredible work that Thomasville has done in the middle of nowhere. And so to see what they've done with a hotel in their downtown is just remarkable. So I think, yeah, we definitely want to use a process that has been proven to work and be successful for other cities.
I agree. And I think the point, Mr. Pepper, you said that that we we decide proposals we want to accept. I think that's an important critical factor because we're not just looking at any hotel on on the lake or any hotel in in the downtown corridor. We're looking for the best quality possible and the the highest hotel brand flag possible. And we believe that, I think, based on the interest that they found, that that we can get a very, very nice and attractive product. So it'd be interesting to see just who who shares that approach and who's willing to to invest, you know, heavily in in this market. So I think it'd be great to to have them go out there and shop it around and see we can choose the the best products possible or none at all. So but Mr. Tull.
Just one quick comment. It just seems, in thinking this through, that kind of a simultaneous analysis might be a good thing. We might they might discover things during that process that they might not otherwise discover. So I I think it's a great idea to do a simultaneous analysis, both downtown and and up at Lake Canton.
I know Ms. Forster's going to talk about the budget amendments later, but but I know that the hotel motel taxes came in higher, too. So I know that.
And those are funds we have to spend.
Funds we have to spend. And certainly, that seems to be certainly a great use for that. So any other comments?
Just in case it's not clear, by the label hotel motel tax, those are taxes that visitors to our town who stay in our hotels and motels pay, and then they leave and go back home. So just when people freak out about money, that's it's guests. It's people we're attracting to our town.
Any else?
Do you need that to be an official motion?
I think what we would want to do is bring back an engagement phase for you to approve. And and that that'll give them some time to schedule that. The Downtown Development Authority has a board meeting next week, so we can work with them on the same on the same thing and try to, you know, and try to get them started on both products, probably by the end of the month. Your next council meeting will be on the 28th, so.
Okay. Thank you. Move into new business and item A, discussion of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Mr. Dodson, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm not here tonight seeking action, just discussion, answer any questions that you all may have. On May 15, staff put out a proposal or RFP for proposal for a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. On June 29, we received seven proposals. At that time, we created a committee made up of staff to review and grade each proposal. From that process, staff narrowed down the seven to a four, and at that time conducted in-person interviews with the top four candidates. From that process, we unanimously came up with a number one, and that is Bran Stetter Carroll Incorporated. And with that, I'll answer any questions, the process or concerns.
Questions for Mr. Dodson. Ms. McGree.
Hi, Mr. Dodson. Can you tell me what method of payment we would use? Where would our money come from? One of the taxes, impact fees?
That'd be sploshed and impact fees.
Sploshed and impact fees, thank you, not property tax. And what is this company going to be looking for?
Basically, what they'll be doing is doing a lot of community outreach. The majority of it will be getting information from different parts of the community. Part of our reasoning behind choosing them was their the way of going about community outreach. We felt like they would get the most numbers, the most data for us to, you know, compile the things we want to do for the next five to 10 years. With that also being said, some of the things that they do is they assess our current assets, give us conditions, timelines, things that we currently have, the longevity of those assets that we have currently. So a lot of that kind of all came together, so.
Will they be looking at Burge and McCandless Parks also?
Yes, ma'am. They they take every bit of parkland that we have currently, whether it has the most updated items to parks that we may not even even built on. So they'll go from there.
Mr. Waterman.
One question. You you mentioned mentioned asset review. So they would do that for us, and potentially their findings could make their way into future budgets, right?
Correct.
So what is the how do you do that now? Do you use a third party now, or do you it's self-assessment?
We do an in-house assessment as things come up and do our best to try to keep up with, you know, wear and tear on playgrounds and buildings. And this will give us a little bit more of a outlook in the future timeline-wise.
So then it helps you and it frees up probably some time and resources.
Correct.
All right.
Anything else?
One one question. Maybe this is for Mr. Peppers. So thinking down the road a bit, when this master plan is developed and we have a we have a plan in place, those sploshed dollars for the public's benefit, Mr. Peppers, need to be encumbered or spent by when?
With splosh, there's not a there's not a spent by date, but we will not start collecting the next splosh until late next summer. And so the the timeframe we were looking at was getting this master plan done so that it could inform the expenses for that next round of splosh. We have a little over 22 million dollars in the next splosh for Parks and Recreation if all the sales taxes come in as projected. And so this would help with those projects. And as you know, we get, you know, we get comments and phone calls, well, it'd be nice to see this, and it'd be nice to see this, and I wish you had this. Well, before the city goes and spends a million dollars to build it, we want to make sure that's something that more than a handful of people want to see, you know, that that the public really does have a desire for that. And so that public input is critical. And, you know, it will it will also help tell us things like what people enjoy about our current park system or what they would like to see changed in our current park system. Not all of that is necessarily something we have to wait five years on splosh dollars to fix. Or, you know, some of it may inform how we do impact fees in the future because it may be that we need to acquire additional property to be able to make that use happen. For example, if the public said, you know, we think the city should have a a brand-new baseball complex, or we don't currently have any parkland that we own where we could just build a complex, that would require impact fees and planning and things like that. So it's good information for us.
Thank you.
Great. So thank you, Mr. Dodson. We look forward to you bringing that back to us at the next meeting or?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Look forward to it. Thank you. Item B, discussion of proposed fiscal year 2023 budget amendments. Ms. Forster, welcome back.
Ms. Forster, I could barely hear you last time. Could you pull the mic closer to you, please?
Sorry about that. So the budget amendments I'm presenting to you are items that I saw some discrepancies between actual and budgeted revenues and expenditures over the last three months and anticipated discrepancies that we'll have through the end of September. And these are in the general fund, the hotel motel tax fund, the tax allocation district, and the splosh fund. So starting with the general fund, I wanted to address two revenue sources. One is the business occupation tax and the increase. And you'll see in that center column, that's the amended item that we're adjusting. Business occupation taxes were budgeted for fiscal year 2023 for $900,000, which was the same amount that we budgeted for 2022 because we didn't know at the time the budget was created, how the economy would affect different businesses, if we would continue to see new businesses join us. And good news, all is well in the business environment in Canton. And per recent audits, we are discovering that several existing businesses had not paid occupation tax over the last two or three years. So that's what justifies this increase. Also, why I needed to point out this increase in the business occupation tax collections is because we're required by state law to hold a hearing, and that will be next scheduled for next council meeting on September 28. And the hearing is required anytime the government's revenues from occupation tax exceed the revenues collected in the previous year. The general fund revenues, you'll see the increase, the transfer from the hotel motel tax fund. And that number, the amendment for $404,634, is directly tied to the number on the bottom of the page coming out of the hotel motel tax fund. Those transfers are required to be the money from the hotel motel tax fund are required to be spent in the year received. So as we see increases in the hotel motel tax revenues, we need to get that money allocated appropriately to where it needs to go, including the general fund. That money should be used for tourism items or for physical events at parks, theaters. So with the increase in revenues, I suggest that we allocate those monies to expenditures that have shown increases over the last 10 months. The first four items of expenditure functions are generally increased because of insurance costs that have and that were increasing unanticipated, and also because those first four functions had the indirect cost allocation from the sanitation fund removed. We had originally budgeted for the sanitation fund to help cover some cost. And now that we're not doing that, these functions are running over budget. And I would like to point out that the council's budget would have probably gone over also if it had not been an empty chair for the last several months. Human resources, those budgeted items are for increased cost of employee surveys and attorney's fees. If you look down at the police department, the communications department, streets and parks, those increases have to do with overtime and special events pay. And as pay goes up for the special events and the concerts and the festivals, so does workers' comp insurance over budgeted estimates. Downtown development is increased mainly for the Georgia Downtown Association Conference that we recently held. And intergovernmental transfers are increased for the fire tax. Looking at the hotel motel tax fund, revenues have increased more than anticipated because when we created the 2023 budget, we weren't sure if the new hotels that were added this year would redistribute redistribute revenues or increase total revenues. And it turns out revenues are increasing. The reserves numbers also increased, and that number is a result of the fiscal year 2022 budget. Once those figures were verified by the auditors, we need to get previous monies out and reallocate. So down below, you'll see for the hotel motel tax fund, we would like to reallocate and increase expenditures for transfers to Canton tourism and transfers to the general fund. The TAD fund is being reduced because tax revenues did not come in as anticipated. Surprisingly, there were several properties in the downtown district that were reassessed and had their values lowered last year. The splosh fund has seen revenues and monies from grants increase. We also have sufficient reserves to cover the budgeted expenditure increase that we're seeing in the increased road construction. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Forster. Any questions for Ms. Forster?
One thing, one thing I will note in just for the the general audience is, for example, as Ms. Forster mentioned, during the year, we ended up having to raise the rate for special event pay to match some of the pay of other jurisdictions around us because we were having a hard time getting the additional overtime for those special events and activities. We've also stayed fully staffed in a lot of departments that we haven't had in the past. We've had a lot more events as a city this year than we have had in the past. And so we have to pay those those fees out. And unlike federal government, for instance, we have to have a balanced budget. So when we do have increases in revenues and we have increases in expenses, it's our responsibility under state law to make sure our budget matches those things. So that's why we bring budget amendments to you to clarify those specific items as they change over time. The the comment that was made about the sanitation fund, we do allocations from different funds back into the general fund based upon the amount of time that, on a whole, people spend working on certain things. So for example, there is a reimbursement back into the general fund from the water and sewer fund that is an allocation that goes towards general administration because when the receptionist picks up the phone upstairs, some of the calls go and are redirected to the water department. That person opens mail. That person, a portion of their time is spent doing those things. In sanitation, you have to recall that in the last year, we outsourced sanitation to a third party. So some of the things we had allocated in the past, we decided to remove that allocation. But since we had additional revenues come in from other sources, we're just replacing it within within the budgets with those sources. So just want to make sure that that clarification is made.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Forster. Item C, discussion of short-term rental ordinance. Mr. Dyer.
Yes, so this, and you had a draft ordinance in your packet. That was the result of the committee meeting. There's a timing issue that we need to just sort of get an idea of what you want to do. The draft is prepared with the effective date being upon the adoption of zoning changes that'll be necessary. And those, of course, will require an advertisement and a public hearing process. So with this ordinance, we could choose to wait and adopt them all at once, or we can adopt this one now, knowing that it's not really effective until later, which might cause a little bit of confusion. But so that's sort of one thing we would need to decide. Tonight, you could say, well, yeah, we do want to do this, and therefore go ahead with the zoning part. And we could get that started, continue to discuss this, and just plan on adopting them at the same time. And we can get that started, continue to discuss this, and just plan on adopting them at the same time. There, you got an email with some comments from a member of the public, and I had addressed it with the email. I wanted to address those tonight as well. One of the comments was about only allowing two adults in a, in a rental room, bedroom, and the suggestion was two plus two, which is, many ordinances do allow two more people in addition to the two adults to, uh, in some ordinances, in fact, so you don't even count small children. So, there's lots of different things there. So, that is something that you can decide that, to add that additional people to be in, in a bedroom. At the committee, we just talked about two adults. We didn't get into the details about that. So, that would be a, a choice that you could make. In the ordinance, as I drafted it, the committee said that they did not want just portions of a house to be used as a short-term rental. It would have to be the entire house. And then, with the exception of something that was qualified as an ADU, accessory dwelling unit, a point was raised about, well, maybe there's some older houses that would qualify that would not, or that might have something like that without it being under a permitted ADU as a non-conforming use or something. So, I had proposed that we could change that to just say, unless the portion that's being used has the thing that you need to have to be an ADU, which is a kitchen facility, bathroom facility, and a bed. So, that would be an option for that, which would not tie it to any particular process or ordinances that we've done for ADUs. That was not the intent. The intent was to provide an exception to having be the whole house for things that were otherwise, have all the things you would want in a short-term rental. You could always choose just to let portions of a house be rented, but that's, the committee did not recommend that. So, I drafted the ordinance that way. So, that would be something we could talk through and, and do. The, the third was on the audit reporting, and, and that does need to be worked on. We've had some communication between the staff and me by email today, trying to come up with a, a reporting thing that makes sense for individuals. I just lifted it from the Hotel Motel Tax. And, and that's probably not really what we want, to have that kind of process for people that might just be individuals. I mean, I think what we ultimately just want to know is how much rent did you make and have the ability to confirm that because they do have to pay the Hotel Motel Tax based on that rental. So, it's probably fairly simple thing to do, and I, I assume that you would also agree that we don't want it to be too on-risk or more detailed than it needs to be. So, there will be some changes to that as well. So, I don't think we really are in a position to adopt it at the next meeting. I think there's some more to be worked out. We would like your input on that. And I do, I think we should just wait and adopt them all at once. That makes sense to me. But if you wanted to go ahead and put it in place, that would be fine.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for working with this committee and helping us figure all this out. This is, again, we've already discussed this, but just in case people aren't in the loop, it's come up because people want to do Airbnbs. People are doing Airbnbs. And, you know, so it's come up, like, how, how can that be regulated? What about the Hotel Motel Tax? Are we making sure that people, how are we making sure that in, in neighborhoods that it's being done the right way? So, the, the mayor decided to appoint a committee, and we've been working on, again, not reinventing the wheel, but seeing how other communities are doing this successfully because they're doing it all around the country. So, I just want to say, I've chatted a little bit with the committee or at least seen some of the emails that went through. And I think my recommendation would be that, yes, it's the two-plus-two occupancy is a good thing to revise in the ordinance. The exception, the way we wanted to build in the exception, if we change that language, it does mean that if a homeowner had a fully finished basement with its own entrance and a full kitchen and the sleeping area and a bathroom, that would be an exception. Yes, it still wouldn't be the whole house, but it would be, it could be a whole entire finished basement.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and so, the, the definition of an accessory dwelling unit is a dwelling unit, which is accessory, and the dwelling unit is defined as a separate, a space that could be independent.
Right.
Meaning, it has all the things you need to live in it. But it also requires a connection to the interior. So, it's not so much about having a separate entrance. It's just a space that has all, that's needed to live in it.
I just want to make sure, I know when we put it in the ordinance, it's more confusing language than, than what we like to try to understand if we're actually trying to run an Airbnb. And then, like you've already said, you'll work in the audit reporting?
We'll, we'll simplify that.
Okay. Is there anything else from the committee?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Mr. Dyer's explanation just now was, was great in that that is the definition of an Airbnb, the company Airbnb, I mean. Somebody, a family, somebody lives in part of the home, and the renter lives in another part of the home.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I think a lot of people rent just a room. And so, that's a choice that you're making or would make, that you don't want somebody just to be able to rent a bedroom out as a short-term rental.
Yeah, yeah, with that exception. Yeah, exactly.
I do have a question. Mr. Dyer, in terms of risk to the, to the property owner, do they have to, uh, secure any additional or different types of insurance? Is that something that they have to notify their insurance company that they are operating a, you know, a short-term rental?
I would think so. And the question would be whether insurance companies consider it a business, which would be a problem, or just consider it as renting, and then there's rental. You basically get landlord insurance. But I don't, the ordinance doesn't require proof of that as drafted. So, that would just be up to the owners as to whether they did that.
Okay. So, more along, keeping along the, the risk route, and they don't disclose that they are operating a short-term rental. There's a safety concern with a renter, short-term renter. This is something that we are about to approve. Does this ever, does the city, will the city ever be at fault for?
No, no. We, we, I mean, we require them, we require the spaces to meet all codes, including life safety and all those things. So, no, we, the city would have no liability risk.
Right. And then, within like code compliance, and they'll have the certificate as well. And my, my thoughts were on the, the other end of it with the insurance company. And if anything had to be, if there was any extra work that they had to do, but seems like they're, it's up to them at their discretion. And I don't, and this is the last thing, I sometimes do get into the weeds when I'm definitely reading contracts, but in exchange for compensation, definition of compensation is monetary.
It's intended to be so. And to the extent that that is...
I can't mow your yard and let me stay in your yard.
Correct. And we can, and we could just say for monetary compensation to make that clear.
Yes, that's right. Please.
Anything else? So, will be the, next move will be to kind of revise that ordinance then for further discussion?
I mean, I can bring it back next, in the next meeting or in the next month. But just kind of keep it going for discussion?
Sounds good. Thank you. And again, thanks for everyone on the work on that. Item D, Discussion of Possible Action on Approval of a Memorandum of Understanding with Cherokee County for 911 Communications. Mr. Peppers?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Just back on the previous manner. Do, do you want us to go ahead and start the process of advertising the zoning changes so we can get that into work? Is everybody okay with doing this? We want to allow it, so we want to go ahead and get started. Okay, yeah.
Sure.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Peppers?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I received an email last week from Mr. Morton with the county. As the 911 Center was applying or working on their application for their national certification, they became aware of the fact that their agreements between the county and each of the cities on 911 Communications had expired. And so, Mr. Morton sent out quick drafts of an updated agreement to all of the cities for us to consider adopting early this month so that they can have that updated. This is the same agreement that we've had with them in the past. Some of the things that it outlines in here is the fact that, you know, they receive the fees off of telecom to operate the 911 system. They do dispatch and communications in coordination with the cities. That they own all of their equipment, that if they get grants, they use the grants for 911. One change that is in this agreement that, that the cities did ask for is that this agreement, the term on it, matched the current term with our service delivery strategy. So, this agreement would be in place until June 30th, 2028, to match with the current service delivery strategy agreement. Staff would recommend, if council's okay, that you go ahead and approve the MOU tonight and authorize the city manager to sign it. That way, we can get it turned in, and they can start, finish the process of moving forward with their re-accreditation.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. So, so again, just to confirm, there's no monetary compensation for this?
I did verify with the, with the county manager that the 911 Center operates on about a six-and-a-half million-dollar budget. A hundred percent of their budget comes from the 911 fee that you pay on your phone service. And they receipt those funds, and that's what they use. And that, that, they're not asking for anything. There is a line in here that talks about fees may be charged to the city for additional services, but we have to mutually agree to those services. Basically, what they're saying is, is if we wanted to specialize in communication or CAD information, that we would be willing to pay an additional fee for that if it was above and beyond what they provide as a county-wide service. But we would bring that back in a contract separate.
Right. So, that's, I noticed that line, too. So, that, that was my concern. So, that is just for any, any additional services we would want for our citizens. It's not for equipment upgrades or?
So, a perfect, no, no. A perfect example of that, a couple of years ago, I say a couple of years, it might have been four years ago. I know one city in Cherokee County had changed their CAD system as it relates to their, to their public safety and the way that things were communicated by address. And to be able to patch in with 911, they had to get a license from 911 to operate with. And so, 911 charged that particular city an additional fee for that annual license. That's above and beyond what they would provide as a county-wide service. But that was handled through a separate contract. So, in this case, if we were asking them for something extra, we would be, we would be contracting with them for that extra service. This contract just says they provide their services on our behalf as a county-wide service.
Okay. Thank you. I know Director Brown Bacon, his team do a great job. And I appreciate you verifying their, their funding, a hundred percent from the telecom, and that the fees are paid. I, I know a lot of counties and a lot of 911 receive extra grants and additional funding through SPOLOST and other things. I know there were some concerns or questions at some point about the 911 system needing some upgrades. And...
And I did talk to the county manager about that. He said the issues they're currently having with 911 are related to the service provider for data and less related to the equipment that they have, and they are working on some additional patches with that. But in the last SPOLOST, they did use funding to create a backup 911 center should anything happen to the current center, and that's been fully funded and is operational at this time.
Okay. Thanks for checking into that. I just, I'd heard that, so I wanted to verify that to make sure that 911 services were functioning well for our citizens. But as far as this memo of understanding, then, and, and I think I certainly agree with it, that it matches the service delivery sta, strategy, uh, good dates as well. So, any other questions on this, or do we have a, a motion on this tonight?
I'd be happy to make a motion to have the city manager a, sign an MOU with the county for 911 Communications. Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Item E, Discussion of Possible Action of, on Removal of Restrictive Covenant for Cherokee County on 4.4 acres at Bluffs Parkway in exchange for a limited warranty deed for the former Tippins Elementary School site. Mr. Peppers?
So, to explain this transaction to the public, the county made a land trade with the school district earlier this year. The school district wanted some property that the county owned, and the county agreed to exchange that property with this Tippins site, the old North Canton Elementary School in the North Canton Mill Village. As part of the process, the county had a conversation about taking that property and then converting it to a housing use. It was ultimately decided that they didn't want to own that in the middle of the city and that they would prefer that the city take ownership of the site. One of the things that they decided was that for us to have ownership of the site, they would like for us to work with them on a property that we gave them up on Bluffs Parkway when we did fire consolidation. So, there's 4.4 acres on Bluffs Parkway just north of the school district site that when we deeded it to them as part of fire consolidation, we put a restriction in the deed that that site had to be used for a fire station. It's, first of all, it's not a great site for a fire station. And second of all, the county actually owns property across the street where the county administrative offices are. And the discussion has always been that if they had to put a fire station in that area, they would just build it on the same site that they are owned. I think the county wants to turn around and sell that 4.4 acres to the school district because the school district is the neighboring property owner. So, at, at the Board of Commissioners meeting on Tuesday night, the Board of Commissioners authorized the execution of a warranty deed for the Tippins site to the city. Our exchange is that we will remove that restrictive covenant from the deed on the 4.4 acres at the Bluffs, so we're no longer requiring it to be used as a fire site. Additionally, the county had provided ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act funds, to Canton Housing Authority and Must Ministries for housing-related projects at Tippins. But the county's not going to own Tippins anymore. In conversation with the county, the county has said that when we take ownership of the site, we will make all decisions on what happens with that. Must Ministries decided that they didn't have enough time to do what they thought that they might want to do in the area, so they actually turned down the grant money that they had been offered. Canton Housing Authority has now been given that portion of the money, plus the money that they had been given before. The intent of the money that the Canton Housing Authority received was to demolish the school portion of that site, not the gymnasium portion. The school portion was built during the 60s. There's some remediation that has to be done there. The housing authorities already received all of their bids. They are ready to go when we are on demolishing the school. It's in really bad shape and just clearing that site. We would then work with the housing authority to determine what the future use of the rest of the property would be. The benefit to us now in owning this and, and also having the gymnasium is as we're working through the process of a Parks and Recreation Master Plan, now we have a space in one of our neighborhoods that we can say, hey, what would you like to see in this space as it relates to programming or what have you? The gym's actually in really good condition. They have a lot of film requests for that particular gym. If, if you're in the audience and you've never been there, it's, it's a gorgeous gym. I don't know how many holiday basketball tournaments have been played over there in the years with, with Cherokee Youth Basketball, but it's a great gym and it's a community resource. Our recommendation to council would be that you vote to remove that deed restriction so that we can close out... so that we can close out that transaction and we can start moving forward with the demolition of the old school and then work with council and Canton Housing Authority to talk about what the rest of that land should look like in that area. Uh, and then, of course, with the gymnasium, we'll do what we need to do to secure it at the current time, make sure it's cleaned up, figure out what the next steps are for it as well.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Peppers. Any questions? Ms. Wilson?
If there are no questions, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
Um, I move that the city remove the restrictive covenant from the Cherokee County property that has been given to them in exchange for the limited warranty deed on the former Tippins Elementary School. Seems like a great deal.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I, I have a question.
Um, Mr. Peppers? So, the county ended up giving all their ARPA grant to the Canton Housing Authority, which is a separate entity that even though it says Canton and it has nothing to do with the city, just to clarify.
Correct.
So, the Canton Housing Authority, because of how the grant funds have to be used, is tearing down the school.
Correct.
What, but there's no guarantee, is there leftover grant money that they can definitely put housing there? Or what if it ends up, housing isn't going to go there? Why would, why is the Canton Housing Authority?
So when this deal was put together, my initial concern and my hesitancy with the county was the fact that they were offering to trade us property and they had offered a grant to an entity to tear the school down. But at the time, we didn't know that the entity would even accept the grant to do that work.
Right.
What I didn't want was a situation where the county gives us a property and now we've got to go in and demolish a building that's, that's not a healthy building. Um, over the last month, the Canton Housing Authority signed their grant agreement with the county. So they have money that they have to spend to demolish that building. Um, so what they were concerned with is between the time that they originally proposed that grant last fall and now there would be an exorbitant price change on the demolition. So they've gone back and they've factored that in. Um, what I did verify with the county is that even though the housing authority will have some excess funds beyond the cost of demolition, they can only spend those excess funds on that property with our permission. So we will have to agree to whatever they want to do on that site.
Okay.
Um, and, and, you know, they're, they're up against the timeline too because ARPA funds have to be spent, have to be encumbered and spent by a certain date. Uh, so they want to get in there and they want to get the school demolished as soon as possible. We do because we don't want, we don't want a vacant building sitting up there that, that could be a, a source of crime or vandalism.
Got it, thanks for that clarification.
And Canton Housing Authority is solely responsible for demolition. If demolition cost runs over, city is not responsible for those.
That's correct. And with the additional money that they received, the, the Musk portion that Musk turned back in, they will have well more than enough to pay for the demolition.
Okay, okay. Further discussion, questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Item F, discussion and possible action on intergovernmental agreement with the Downtown Development Authority on the purchase and redevelopment of property at six eighty-seven Marietta Highway.
Uh, there's actually two items here because remember, we added one as a, as, uh, as part of the agenda pro- agenda process. Uh, this particular property backs up to the city's trail and sewer line that was expanded on Etowah River. Um, this is the steepest slope of that trail and sewer project. So, over the course of time, what has happened is, as we've been doing work on the sewer, we had to encroach on that property to secure the slope. And there's still some slope work that has to be done in that particular area. Um, we had, we had an opportunity with the Downtown Development Authority to enter into an agreement to purchase that property. That will allow us to purchase that slope to do whatever we need to on that slope to protect our sewer and our, uh, our trail. And then the Downtown Development Authority can turn around and, and work with a private entity to sell the front portion of that that's on Marietta Highway. So basically what the intergovernmental agreement is doing is it's providing funding to the Downtown Development Authority to make that purchase. Um, it states that at some point we will survey off what that slope is so that we can, uh, uh, make that a permanent ownership of the city versus what they will sell off on the front. Uh, and that the city will approve the sale of the front to whatever developer they enter into an agreement with in the future. Did I summarize that correctly, Mr. Dyer?
Yes, it's basically a joint development agreement, meaning we, the city has a say in what happens on the property in exchange for providing the money to buy it.
And the second part of that is a settlement agreement, and I'm going to let Mr. Dyer explain that.
So you'll recall that, as Mr. Peppers described, the slope was a subject of two, uh, condemnation actions for these men and we've been fighting and we went up to the court of appeals and all, all that. So, uh, the owner is selling the property and would like to resolve the cases. And so, uh, the settlement agreement was to settle both cases for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and, and so that both the cases will be dismissed and over with. And we were gonna, we had already gone beyond our, uh, the areas we had condemned, so we were going to have to redo all that anyway. So that's, uh, taking care of all that. And then to get, the second component was the few thousand dollars that we had paid in, the owner will get to keep out of court. So, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus a few thousand dollars that had been paid in. So, we would like, on that, we would like a motion to approve those terms.
All right. So that was the agenda item added, the settle, the terms of the settle agreement, so.
That was the agenda item added.
Right, and then the set, the, the original item is the, uh, intergovernmental agreement with the DDA on the, uh, purchase and redevelopment of the property. So, with the city having say-so of how it's developed and if it's sold.
They, they would, they would, like with other properties we've done with the DDA, they would have to bring a, a development agreement back for, subject to your approval.
Correct, correct.
And I will make a note that when the agenda cover sheet was prepared, I listed a budgetary, uh, amount of one point five million. It's not one point five million, it's one million dollars that we would like as part of the IGA and it's the additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's the settlement. Uh, so it ends up being one point two five.
One point two five, okay. And then this, uh, solves the, this settles the disagreement with the property owner on that slope.
No more litigation, yes.
Also puts the slope, uh, and the restoration of the slope in the city's hands. So we can solve that and proceed with the trail finally and complete that project that our citizens have been asking about. So, uh, it solves that issue and then allows us to proceed and DDA proceed with, with, uh, then marketing and redevelopment of that property, uh, uh, to the city's, um, best interest, so. Make everyone clear on that? Okay, Ms. Smith?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve that intergovernmental agreement with the Downtown Development Authority for the purchase and redevelopment of the property at six eighty-seven Marietta Highway.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that item? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion.
I would like to make another motion.
Yes, Ms. Smith?
Um, to approve the terms of the settlement agreement at that same property in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Mr. Peppers?
Uh, just a couple of items I want to mention tonight. Um, first of all, a reminder for the public that, uh, a second council meeting in September will be held on the twenty-eighth. Uh, recall when we set the, uh, calendar at the beginning of the year, we decided to push the second meeting back a week because it fell during the fall break with schools and we were going to have some issues with staffing and council. So that meeting will be on the twenty-eighth. And have no fear, we'll come back the very next week and have our first meeting in October. So we'll get to see everybody two weeks in a row, so that's exciting. Uh, the second thing I wanted to mention is, is, is just a real big thank you to our team, volunteers, our staff, uh, our elected officials. We had a fantastic Georgia Downtown conference in August. We had visitors from many, many cities across the state. Uh, state organizations, state agencies, uh, uh, private entities such as Georgia Power and other groups like that. They had a wonderful time while they were here in Canton. Uh, the team, uh, put in a lot of work to prepare for that. Uh, lots of compliments on our community and the growth of our downtown area. People had an opportunity to visit the mill, they had an opportunity to visit historic buildings downtown. They got to see art projects, they got to enjoy our theater, they got to enjoy events, food, beverage, hotels. Uh, our staff in lots of cases went above and beyond to make sure that those individuals were treated well while they were here and taken care of. And I couldn't be more, more appreciative to the hard work that went into that. Valinda Hardy, all of the folks in our Explore Canton team, uh, that, that worked on that particular event. Our boards that volunteered to assist. Uh, I saw, I saw board members as bartenders and, and, and handing out water and standing, making sure people got on shuttles. They enjoyed an opportunity to get on the river. We got some really good footage of that. Uh, so it was a great opportunity to showcase the city. And we had several businesses say, can we do this again sometime? So we'll be looking for the other conferences that we can, we can bring to town now that we've done that one. I think it, I think it was a good opportunity to share our community with the state of Georgia. And, and frankly, I think the people around the state who had never been to Canton were very surprised and impressed with the community that, that they found here. So I did want to mention that. I have no other, oh, oh, I do. Saturday is our multicultural festival. I do not want to forget that. It's one of our, uh, great events that we do throughout the year. Um, I believe we have seventeen or so countries that will be with us and represented. Uh, it's hard work by our team putting that on and I know they're looking forward to the event. Uh, it'll be warm, so make sure you stay hydrated, but come ready with an empty stomach because there's going to be lots of good food and we appreciate the hard work that goes into that. Hope to see everyone there, uh, get an opportunity to meet your neighbor, learn a little bit about the different cultures of our community and enjoy, uh, an opportunity to give us feedback on how we're doing as a community. So, any questions you might have for me?
Any questions for Mr. Pepper? Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Peppers. I concur with you on, uh, the great work for our team. And for the Georgia Downtown Conference, I saw so many posts, uh, you know, just praising Canton and, and the great time that people had here and saw so many people talking about how they were going to return to Canton and bring their families, uh, uh, from all over the state. So it was really exciting, so very proud. So, any council introduce items? I have nothing, uh, and so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate litigation and personnel.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn to executive session to discuss litigation, personnel, and real estate. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned. Thank you everyone, have a great evening.